Thank you for joining us tonight. First order of business on tonight's agenda is the oath of office. We have Mayor Winnick here, who will be swearing in myself and both Councilmember Beistrum and Councilmember Monson. And we ask family members to come up as your official is being sworn in, so would welcome the Bane train up.
I, Mayor Bane, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Mayor Bane, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the City Council.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Mayor of the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota.
Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
City of Forest Lake, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(applause) I, Kathy Beistrum, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Kathy Beistrum, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of City Council.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the City Council.
Of the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Of the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
I, Kelly Monson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Kelly Monson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the City Council.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the City Council.
Of the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and abilities, so help me God.
Of the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. (applause)
And with that, I'll call this meeting to order. Bailey, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Monson?
Present.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Present.
Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
Mayor Bane?
Here.
If you are able, I ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? All right. First portion of the meeting agenda is our open forum. Residents, this is your opportunity to, it's actually the opportunity of anybody who has an interest to speak this evening. If you are here on a specific item, please note there is no public hearing anticipated for tonight, so if you are here on a specific item, this is your opportunity to be heard. So if you would like to come up and sign, you're welcome to do so. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and also know that this is your opportunity to provide input to council, but council will not be engaging in a discussion. There's follow-up items, either I'm happy to follow up, or staff will follow up as appropriate. So with that, first item, Susan Taylor. Thank you. Please state your name and record, name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Susan Taylor, and I live at 21549 Inwood Avenue North, here in Forest Lake. And I'd like to say that I am a new resident to Forest Lake, having moved here in June, not too far from home, coming from a small hobby farm in North Branch. I decided I would rather float on your lovely lake than bail hay.[475.31][475.31](laughter) So here I am. And one of the things that I am familiar with in this community is your senior center, and here is, that is what I would like to address this evening for your consideration. I am a member of the Act on Alzheimer's program, of which the city has been very supportive in the past. And our leader, Jules Benson, whom many of you might know, has been very successful in recruiting, some would say dragging, people to serve in various capacities on the Act on Alzheimer's program. One of the noticeably lacking presence at the table is someone representing our senior center, although there have been numerous requests for someone to participate. I also belong to some other organizations and have reached, I would say, a wall prohibiting someone from actively engaging us from the senior center. I was recently at a meeting where there were people from the senior linkage line, some of you may be familiar with that statewide program, where people can call and ask for any information about seniors. And there are live human beings that answer the phone and actually know what's going on in the community. The woman who represents the Forest Lake area approached me at this meeting and said, "I understand you moved to Forest Lake. Tell me, why isn't there a senior center there? There is no focal point for us to refer callers to." I recently had the opportunity to stop by the senior center as a new resident of the community, and asked to talk to the director there, and was given a sheet of paper with a phone number on it, no name, nothing else, but a sheet of, little slip of paper with a phone number suggesting that I call back. Based on my personal experience with this situation, I would ask that as the liaison from this group is appointed to the senior center, that with that, it be a consideration to ask people from the community, and I'm willing to step up, and I know there are others in the community willing to step up with me, to work with you and the Board of Directors of the City Council, of the senior center, and the director there, to see and examine opportunities to bring them to becoming more of a part of a very large, growing population in this community, that would invite people such as me to participate in activities at the senior center. So I'm asking the council to consider that. You have my name, contact information. I'm standing here, willing to look into it and report back findings of ways that we can bring the senior center up to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jim DeForre.
Good evening, Jim DeForre, 1531 Ninth Avenue Southeast. Congratulations, welcome aboard. Don't get rid of your baling twine, you will need it for the weeds that wash up on your shore.[694.04][694.04](laughter) I got, I want to question right about sidewalks in town. I know there's quite a few of them that the city does maintain, I'm not sure why, like along 15th Street, between Eighth Street and where Bay Park is. I know it hasn't really been much of a winter, but there's been a lot of refreeze and all that. I've personally seen two, three people fall along that section. If the city's maintaining it, then maybe get some salt out there or something on it more often. And also along Bay Drive, there's sidewalks there that the citizens are maintaining or supposed to maintain, and there's quite a few that don't even take the effort to do anything. And I've seen people slip and fall on that, too. It's just been a really bad winter with the refreeze and all that, but at least people could give it an effort, so. That's basically all I have. Like I said, welcome, congratulations.
Thank you. Next up, Alex Kato. Welcome, can she state your name and address for the record?
I will do that. Good evening, and congratulations, and best wishes. I'm Alex Kato, I live at 1082 Bay Drive Southeast, here in Forest Lake. I am here with good news and bad news. I'll start with the bad news. Unfortunately, Karen Moorhead, who's sitting in our audience tonight, is retiring from the school board, as you may or may not know. And because of her retirement, I actually got elected to the school board this fall.[789.62][789.62](laughter) And so I have Karen to either blame or, or give credit to for that. Anyway, I just wanted to introduce myself, because as of Thursday night, when I was sworn in to the school board, I was actually appointed as the liaison for the city. So I'll be working with all of you, hopefully for the next four years at least, so. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. You as well. Forgive me if I mispronounce this name, Mike Widenhauer. Could you state your name and address for the record?
You bet. It's Mike Widenhammer, 67 South Lake Street, Forest Lake. So, good evening. First, I just want to say congratulations to mayor and newly appointed council members, so congratulations.
Thank you.
So I'm here to discuss briefly a renewal of a tobacco license for a business called CloudX Vape. I own a vape store in the community here, and as most of you know, we have done some extensive background and research, and put in a lot of different steps to prevent minors in this community from getting any kind of vaping products. And it's been a pretty big issue in the city, as I know a police chief would agree with, and has had multiple calls on. And my concern is that they're up for a new tobacco license after three failed compliance checks, I believe is the number at this point, but that at this point, they're just looking to transfer it over to somebody else and continue doing business in our city. I've spent an extremely large amount of time and my resources and money, and your energy and efforts trying to prevent these types of things from happening, as well as helping them out with card readers and different things to help them prevent this from happening. And at this point, it seems evident to me that they really just don't ethically care that much about if they get their product in the hands of minors. So our, my concern with that is, I just want to make sure this city doesn't let a loophole, let somebody continue on in business by just changing over tobacco license in somebody else's name, just based off of three failed compliance checks and changing over to somebody else. I saw some things in social media last week, that they already announced that they will be back in business as of January, and that was pretty concerning for me, that they're just not taking this very serious, and already pretty much assumed at this point that they will continue on in business. And there's been multiple people that have wrote some different posts and messages to them stating what the real reason is and where they're at, and they're just hiding right now at this point as a remodel of their store, not coming out and taking any kind of acknowledgement and responsibility for their actions at this point. So I hope as the city council members and mayor, that we can do the right thing here and keep this city from letting somebody just openly put their product in the hands of minors that it doesn't belong with, so. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Young.
Susan Young, 9950-199 Streets North. Congratulations, welcome, we have high expectations, and I'm looking forward to seeing the wonderful things that you're going to do. If the Little Penguin is out, and the Rotary Wheel is out, that means it's plunge time. Bolton and Mink has got a challenger this year, just saying. The Rotary Plunge is going to happen on February 16th. It is a premier funding opportunity for nonprofits, organizations in our community. We have changed our funding this year with the Rotary. Seventy percent of all the proceeds go to the funding organization. There is a line on our, on one of our sheets that says $1,000 to the Rotary. That is not true anymore, it's a straight 70/30 split. This is the easiest money that organizations will ever raise. You get your friends, you get your frenemies, you get your aunts, your uncles, your grandparents, your nieces and nephews. Say, "Hey, we'll watch you jump in the lake." "Well, we can't be there, we're in Arizona." "Cool, I got it covered, you can watch it livestream down on LA TV."[1044.01][1044.01](laughter) There is a premier opportunity for the city council to continue a previous tradition of having a premier spot to jump in the lake. And as plunge chairman, I believe that I can guarantee you that premier spot to raise money for whichever organization you would like to support. The theme, our theme is getting cold for a cause. And to date, I've got 13 organizations that have already signed up. Bolton and Mink, the YMCA Scholarship Committee, Rangers Football, by the way, Ryan Rangers Football has vowed to be the top fundraiser this year. They got a lot. I mean, there's, there's bunches of them. The Stillwater Sunrise, Lila, Lila, plungers for a playground, that is some of the Rotary folks. Dane Jumpers, that is a Dane Rescue Organization. Goat's Gone Wild, that's food for his children. The North Polar Plungers, Green Horizon, and Forest Lake Most. That is a positive community norms organization for youth in Forest Lake. Our, our website is WinterPlunge, all one word, dot com. That's where you'll find the signup, the teams, how to raise money. We have another new option this year. Some of the Rotarians have gotten together and have put together a challenge. So the organization that raises the most money will have whatever's in the challenge pot on the day of the plunge, added to their total, 100%, nothing taken off the top. Even if you don't want to plunge, there are organizations in this community that are well, well worth your support through sponsoring one of the plungers. I'd encourage everybody to take a look at the WinterPlunge.com website, and find an organization that you would like to plunge, that you would like to sponsor, and, and join us. And even if you don't want to plunge, come watch. It is the greatest show in Forest Lake. We've got, we've got folks in costume, we've got kids jumping up and down, we've got dancers doing the twirl thing, we've got engineers jumping into the lake. Thank you very much. WinterPlunge.com, Rotary, come on down.
And with that, we will close the open forum portion of our meeting, and move on to our consent agenda.
And Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda, removing 7B. It's a small thing, but I want to discuss it.
Can I make a friendly request that we also remove item 7O?
7O, was it?
Yes.
I have no problem amending my motion.
Looking for a second? I'll second.
All those in favor?
Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
On 7B, that, it's the approval of council minutes from December 10th. We're never going to have a majority to vote on that, so I want to talk to Bridget about how to handle that, because there's only been two of us that have ever been to that meeting. Everybody else would have to abstain, so it's a small thing, but how would we handle that?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So you are allowed to vote on minutes for meetings that you did not attend. I think as a matter of policy, most people do not, because they did not attend the meeting and therefore didn't attend the meeting, and so are a little bit disadvantaged when reviewing those minutes. Of course, meetings can be reviewed online and things like that, but you are allowed to vote on minutes for council meetings that you did not attend, should you so choose.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meetings from December 10th, 2018.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item, consent agenda, agenda item O. Bailey, I'll toss this one over to you for a little discussion.
Yeah, there's a minor mistake on the memo subject, that it's a Mallards license, it's actually for Pizza Hut, which is also described in the body. So what is it, for approval of an on-sale 3-2 license for Pizza Hut, not Mallards?
With that clarification, I'll entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right, with that, we are complete with the consent agenda. For those in the audience and those watching on, online, couple, just a couple of quick notes on a couple of changes on council meeting structure going forward. We are trying to be more intentional on those items that are ready for action, and having those in an actions portion of the agenda. You will notice a new section to the agenda down below, which is for items for discussion only. Traditionally, those have only been discussed in workshops. We just want to allow for a little bit more time for those items that aren't, again, requiring action, but may require a couple of swings at the bat, if you will, before we're ready to take action. We want to reserve agenda space for that item. You will also notice that we are proposing a slightly different approach to the regular agenda items, those items that are requiring action, in that we will structure discussion for each agenda item, where staff will present. I will entertain a motion, a second, and then that will kick off the discussion portion, of which then we will conclude with a vote, or amend that original motion as needed. If you are watching and comparing to past meetings, it might say, "Oh, how are you making a motion? You haven't even had the discussion." We will have a robust discussion, amend any motions if needed. But again, this is the section of the agenda that should be ready for it to take some action, so just wanted to make those notes as we proceed. And with that, we will open up with a agenda item, which is the first item, declaring a council vacancy. Bridget, you're going to walk, walk us through this?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Now that Mayor Bane has taken a oath of office and is officially the mayor, her council seat does become vacant. As you can see, there is a resolution included in your packet, which does declare a vacancy. The council then needs to determine which process it would choose to pursue as far as filling that vacancy is concerned. There is a suggested appointment process here, it would involve an application process, an interview process, similar to the process that was undertook, or that the city undertook in 2018 to fill the council vacancy at that time. If the counselor, your honor, has any questions, I stand for questions regarding the proposed process.
And if I may, let's take these one at a time. Let's declare the vacancy first, we'll do a vote on, just vote on that, and then we'll move into the filling proposal.
I make a motion that we adopt regular agenda item 8A Resolution 01141907, declaring a vacancy on the city council.
A second. Open up for discussion, any discussion on this item?
Not much to discuss.[1511.13][1511.13](laughter)
I'm here. And with that, I'll, I'll, I'll ask for a vote, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right, second up, council vacancy process. This is in our packet on page 113, and Patrick, you're going to walk us through the proposed process?
Sure, it's a very, very simple schedule. We have a application form for any interested candidates that will be available tomorrow here in City Hall or online. The application process will be open until the close of business on February 1st, which is 4:30. At that time, we will forward those applications to the city council for their, for their review, and hold a special, hold a meeting on February 18th to review those candidates and interview the candidates. It'll be, all the candidates will, and then we'll, once we've interviewed those candidates, the council will have a deliberation period and may choose a candidate at that time. We will schedule, if they, if they're ready to make a decision that night, we will encourage them to do so. If not, then we can, we can schedule it for the 25th, if necessary.
Terrific. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Point of clarification first, February 18th is President's Day. So would we move to February 19th?
Correct, the workshop is scheduled for February 19th.
Okay.
All right, given that, I move to approve the city council vacancy appointment process as outlined by city administrator Patrick Casey.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Katie.
I second. Any discussion of this item, other than the clarification of dates?
Okay, the dates, we got those. The only, the only thing I just wanted to bring up, I mean, this is a process that we used before, and it seemed to work pretty good, but I think we want to make sure that we certainly invite the candidates that did show an interest during the regular campaign to serve as council members, and so help those folks, or some of them that apply. So, just, that's the only comment I'd like to make about that.
Can we clarify how the questions are created? Are, is it a standardized set of questions that we use, and how, how are they developed?
We will use the standard questions for each candidate, and I think that we will forward any, we will try to help you with those. I'm sure that you used some the last time. Forward them to you in the email for your input, and then we will try to finalize that before the 18th.
Okay. And then, one more question. All facets are conducted in kind of that open meeting format, correct? Okay.
Correct. Thank you for emphasizing that. Important for everybody watching to know that that is, all of those, that entire process is an open meeting. It is a public interview of all of those candidates that choose to apply. As it relates to, Councilmember Husnick's question on making sure people know, can we have staff make sure that, that those dates and timelines are included in our weekly newsletter, or the weekly updates that go out, and then also some social media posts? Would be helpful. Okay. Any other discussion on this item? The motion was to approve, with the amended date, the, the proposal of staff. With that, I will call a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next up, item 8D, approval of 2018 fund balance commitments. Hannah, I believe, is presenting on this item.
I'm sorry?
I skipped an agenda item, thank you. It won't be the first time. 8C, approval of appointing acting mayor. Bailey, you want to walk us through this one?
Yeah. Per Minnesota state statute, at the first meeting of each year, council shall choose to appoint an acting mayor of the council mayors, and this mayor shall perform duties of the mayor during disability or absence of the mayor from the city, or in the case of a vacancy of the mayor.
I'll jump in and take the lead.
I'll jump in and take the lead on this one. I would make a motion that we appoint council member Husnick as acting mayor for 2019.
I second it.
Any discussion on this item?
Thank you.
Sam, you accept? Very good.
I do accept.
With that, I'll call a vote. All of those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Motion carries. Now Hannah, ready for you, 2018 fund balance commitments.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm just bringing forward a motion. It's a yearly motion of a commitment of fund balance in the general fund. This commitment is for three programs that we account for in this fund. Safety Camp, the Northern Lights Festival, as well as the Power Produce Program, which is put on by Parks and Rec. The reason for this commitment, just for these programs, revenues have come in that have exceeded the expenditures in this year, as well as the previous years. So, we're asking for the commitment of $8,179 for Safety Camp, $3,204 for Northern Lights Festival, as well as $1,420 for Power Produce Program. In that motion, we're also asking if we do come up with any other amounts that could be related to those programs, that we will then include that in the commitment for 2018 during our audit.
I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for item eight D to approve the 2018 fund balance commitments as presented by Hannah.
Second.
With that, open up for discussion.
So, I, I have, could you some clarification on this item? As you know, during our December budget conversation, we had quite a conversation around fund balance. That's what, that's not what tonight's request is about. Just indications from staff on where we are with that process and what that looks like for making those decisions.
Yeah, this, this is definitely not fund balance. This is revenues generated from these programs that we want to keep dedicated to those programs. Fund balance will be, really, at this point, we should wait till the auditors come up with the final fund balance and close out the books for 2018. And then make a recommendation, if you so desire, either in the next budget process to reallocate those, or in a special process to, to allocate excess funds for whatever reason the council may deem fit. But I think it's wise and prudent to wait now until the 2018 year is closed out by the auditors and have a better representation of what we have for fund balance.
Thank you. Just wanted some clarification on where we were in that process.
Any other discussion on this item? With that, I will call a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Moving right along, we are at item F, Cloud X vape tobacco license application.
E.
E. Oh, my, I did it again. On the big one, too. Item E, I'm sorry.
We're not going to let you get away with that, Mara.
Thank you. Keep me honest. Please after hiring recommendations, Chief Peterson.
Mayor and city council members, good evening. The Forest Lake Police Department currently has one vacant police officer position due to a retirement in July of 2018. Luke Hanagraff has completed and passed a very thorough hiring process and background investigation, including a physical agility test, medical evaluation, and psychological evaluation. Luke currently works with the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension as a special agent. Luke has extensive education, training, and experience that he'll be bringing to the Forest Lake Police Department, and he is very excited for the opportunity to work for our organization and the city. If approved by the city council, Luke Hanagraff's tentative start date will be on January 30th, 2019. My recommendation, and staff recommends, approval by the city council on the hiring of Luke Hanagraff as police officer with the Forest Lake Police Department at the pay grade of step five.
With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the hiring of Luke Hanagraff to fill the upcoming retirement vacancy, per the recommendation and within the parameters outlined by Chief Peterson.
I'll second it.
Open for discussion?
So, quick question, just quick question. Recommendation is coming in as a step five. Can you walk council through how step five was determined, how that relates to other new hires we've recently had? Just little clarification.
Yeah. As you may know, it is a very difficult process lately to hire police officers. It's just more individuals are not going to school to become police officers. And unfortunately, some departments utilize what we call a lateral pay in order to get some seasoned officers to apply. In our case, we did open it up for a lateral pay increase or a pay for officers. In this case, Luke Hanagraff has extensive knowledge and education, and he actually worked as a police officer here for a few years before he had the opportunity to go to the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension as a special agent. He in turn has a family and some young kids. He lives in the area, and he's really excited to get back to the Forest Lake Police Department. And with his extensive knowledge and education and experience, we offered him the step increase, or I'm sorry, the lateral, lateral pay at step five.
Thank you. Other questions for Chief Peterson? With that, I will, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. And if I can prove I know my alphabet, I'd just next, Cloud X vape license application. Bailey, you want to walk us through this?
Mayor, council members, the city of Forest Lake has received a new tobacco license application from an individual that has not previously been licensed for a tobacco license in the city of Forest Lake. The application process was the same as all other application processes. The police department did their background check, and staff has concluded that there's nothing in the background that would disqualify the individual from obtaining the license at this time.
Thank you, Bailey. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move to deny the Cloud X vape license request.
I second.
Okay, we've, so let's move into a discussion phase. Discussion items?
First of all, I'd like to say that I really want us to be a community that graciously and openly welcomes new businesses. Furthermore, I'm all about second chances. But I believe if approved, we are in essence gaining, granting a fourth chance to this establishment. In other words, I'm not convinced a change in the name on this application will result in a change of operations. Vaping is a growing problem nationally, in our state, and certainly locally. As Chair of our local Substance Use Prevention Coalition, I can tell you it's an unprecedented challenge. After 17 years of steady decline in youth smoking, these devices are poised to hook a new generation. In fact, the situation is so serious that the Surgeon General has declared youth vaping an epidemic. Teen vaping doubled between 2017 and 2018. On the, on the local front, if you talk with any middle, middle school or high school educator in this or really any community, it's a number one issue that they are addressing internally in their buildings. Our local data is similar to the national data. One in five 12th graders have vaped in the past 30 days. Part of the reason it's such a rapidly growing problem is that the research on the risks and harm of vaping are relatively new. So, we're kind of a step behind in implementation of effective strategies, including communication with youth and parents. Youth do not perceive this substance as harmful, and you'd be astounded by the number of kids who still think it's water vapor and that it doesn't contain nicotine. Nearly a third of our high schoolers report getting their vaping device from a retail outlet, with at least one in five reported, reporting getting them from a vape shop. Flavors like Cherry Cola, Bubble Gum, and, and others, it's clear they're being marketed to youth. They're not typically safe to be inhaled into the lungs either. It isn't water vapor, and it isn't harmless. It's a mixture of very harmful chemicals, including formaldehyde, acrolyin, which is a contact herbicide used to kill kind of floating foliage, and diacetyl. It's a, that's a flavoring agent that's used in microwave popcorn. Virtually all juices contain nicotine, which is a highly addictive substance, even the ones that are labeled nicotine-free. Youth who vape are more likely to go on to use traditional tobacco. In fact, two times more likely. I believe we have a collective responsibility as a community to protect our young people. I think this is a good time for the city council to step back, reflect on our values, and reevaluate our policy around these establishments. Research shows that restricting youth access through density and location policies and robust compliance checks works to prevent and reduce youth substance use. These are evidence-based strategies in the prevention world. Perhaps we can take an opportunity to simultaneously evaluate and strengthen our penalties for selling to minors as well. I cannot personally support this request and suggest we place a moratorium on new licenses until we have a chance, as a city, to further evaluate and discuss the situation. I would really like to see us lead the charge and change, change the norm in Forest Lake. Let's be recognized as a community that puts the well-being of its residents, especially its young people, first. We have an opportunity, and I'd argue an obligation to do so. Thank you, Kathy. Other items of discussion?
Madam Mayor, Kathy gave a lot of really good data, which is very, very important. And for me, having attended some of the meetings in the past, the applicant has disclosed a relationship to the prior owner, and I, I have some concerns about that, and I feel like I would need some more assurances moving forward. I feel like I don't have enough information about this.
Sam, council member Husnick?
Although I agree with the, the items that the council's bringing up as far as the health hazards and all that, and one of the things about addiction, I can tell you, about tobacco is one of the worst ones, and take it from somebody that's been or done that, okay? 38 years ago. And the, the point is, when we're looking at this application, we have to keep in mind that this is an absolutely legal business. Now, whether they're doing, they're doing something wrong within that legality is a different story, but I think to try to, I think we're trying to come up with some sort of a Forest Lake resolution that we're not going to allow something like this, and I think that'd be an awfully slippery slope to, to go down. And we have to keep in mind that until the law is changed somehow, you know, that we have to abide by that, too. So, that, that's just my comments. And as far as Cloud X vape is concerned, I mean, the first time they got into trouble, I was the one that advocated that we give them a second chance, and it wasn't more than, I don't know, just a very short time, and it happened again. And so, it's really tough to, to look at this and then, and, and say, okay, well, something's changed because we have a different name on the application, and I don't see where anything has changed. So, I, I just, those are comments I wanted to make about that, so.
Thank you.
I, I'm not arguing, Mayor Husnick, about being, you know, denying this forever. I'm just saying this is a great opportunity for us to take a step back and reflect on our values as a community and, and the kind of community that we want for our, our residents, and especially our young people.
Well, certainly, I just, I agree with that. I just want to make sure that we, that we follow the law as we're doing that. Okay?
So, I'm hearing some concerns around potential future policy decisions, but then that has to be brought back to the decision before us tonight, which is on a very specific application. So, being the old lady on council with the history on this particular application, applicant, there is a, we do have a history with this particular name of this business and the property location of this business, although the license holder admittedly, over time, has changed. Concerning for me is that there has been a common management team in place, regardless of whoever the applicant holder, or application holder is or the license holder. There has been a common management team, and that has been problematic in a number of violations of sales to youth. And we have had repeated council conversation as, with, with the business as a whole of, you know, ramifications of that and license, what that means for their license status. The, so I, I understand that we have an ability to, we have a standard application, but we also have an ability to kind of pause, take a timeout, and ask for some additional information? Bridget, is that a true, is that a, is that a true statement? Am I, we could ask for, council, before we make this decision, we could ask for some additional information?
Mayor, members of the council, the particular license, a tobacco license, is governed by chapter 118 of the city code, and in that section, point 03, governing licenses, there is sort of a standard application form that's discussed and application information that's required. There is, in fact, language in there that states that any additional information that the city deems necessary could be considered as part of that application. So, should the city have any additional information it deems necessary for full consideration of the application, it could certainly approach the applicant and request that specific information as this wording is included in the code as written.
So, helpful to me in making this decision would be, first of all, is the applicant here. So, the applicant isn't here. Having a hearing with the applicant here would be helpful. And important to me and helpful in making this decision would be to understand what is their plan for management, who will be in place. I think we can ask that question. We certainly can't require them to maintain that structure, but it's a question we've never asked before, and as future discussions come up, if necessary, it gives us some ability to push on that, if necessary. As well as, a common theme in this particular business has been lack of training. It breaks my heart, we had a 16-year-old who actually was the last violator, who come up, came up and took far more responsibility for that action than the actual business owner himself. And so, training and how you are going to be training and what is your staffing plan, I think would be helpful to make the decision on this particular license, but we're not able to do that tonight. We don't have that information. I am open to tabling this, if that would be helpful information for other council members to consider, if we want to go down that path. I sense, just thoughts, reactions?
I'm ready to vote. Any, any interest in tabling for additional information, or are we ready to vote on this one?
I would be interested to get the information you're looking for, Mara. I really would. I know there's some real, some real concerns about tobacco, and, and there should be, but I think we need to find out exactly what safeguards are out there. That's what we're trying to do, is protect kids, you know? And so, and right now, we don't have that information.
Bridget, if we do table this for another evening, are we able to notice that as, is it a requirement at that point that we notice it for a public hearing? Is public hearing optional? If we're going to make this decision, I would like to at least make a little more formal invitation, but help walk me through what's appropriate in standard procedure.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, so I understand there is a motion on the table right now, whether that motion succeeds or fails, or what happens next. One option is to continue the item to the next meeting, to request that staff request the additional information that's been discussed by council and any other related information council members would like to have. I'm hearing some concern regarding who the real party and interest is to the license application, so certainly a request could be made to obtain additional information regarding that issue. I know there's a challenge here in that the business, the licensed applicant is an LLC, lashes by Courtney, that's different than the last LLC, which was a license holder that was located in that physical premises, so it's not a renewal application. This is a brand-new application for a new entity. It's just that its assumed name is the same assumed name that the last LLC that was operating in that physical space is using. So, certainly, additional information could be obtained prior to that next meeting. If the council, and I'm hearing, there's certainly some, some, there appears to be some desire or some thought about potentially denying the license. If that's the case, it would be my recommendation that you allow, or excuse me, invite the applicant to attend the council meeting, that there be a hearing- that there be a hearing. There's a difference between a public hearing and a hearing in that a public hearing typically includes notice and notice requirements in the newspaper and is most often found with zoning applications and other types of applications. That there would be a hearing, that the applicant would have an opportunity to be heard. Now, that doesn't preclude the council from calling a public hearing. But obviously, when the council is deliberating this, it is constrained with respect to its decision-making calculus to those legally ascertainable qualifications of the applicant and things like that. And obviously, it's up to the council as far as whether you'd want to schedule it for a hearing, notify the applicant of that hearing and request their presence, schedule it for a public hearing, do none of the above.
Okay, we have a motion on the table that has been seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Motion, and Bailey, can you read back the motion, just so we're all clear on what we're voting on?
Motion to deny the Cloud X vape new license request.
Thank you. And could I call for a roll call vote on this one? Councilmember?
For me, no.
Further discussion?
No, I thought you were calling for a vote, I'm sorry.
Roll call vote. Yep, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I, or actually, Bridgette, I have a question for you. There's no legal reason now why we would deny this other than the assurances that we want in the future. There's no legal...
Well, mayor, members of the council, any reasons for denial would be those articulated by the council. So I believe that the staff recommendation was based off of the background check. And if you'll notice, the memo was specifically related to the background investigation, that there was nothing in the background investigation on that applicant that would, that would preclude issuance of the license. Licensing is a discretionary function of the council. Certainly, the council cannot act in an arbitrary or capricious manner. But ultimately, whether or not a license is issued is to be determined by the council, the issuing authority in this case.
This is a tough one, having a teen, 15-year-old in the community. This is, this is a big deal. I would actually like to see us wait on a vote.
Is that a motion to table?
It's a motion to table.
Is there a second to that motion?
I would second that motion, yes.
So...
You have to vote on the other, you still, you still have a vote and a motion on the table.
Thank you, thank you for, thank you. So I will call, any further discussion? I will call in to question the original motion, which is the motion to deny. All those in favor of denial, signal by saying aye. All those opposed, sig?
Were you going to do a roll call?
I'm sorry, let's do a roll call vote. Councilmember Munson?
No.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Aye.
Councilmember Huesnick?
No.
Mayor Bain?
No.
We are now able to reopen?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we, that we table this till we can have a hearing on this situation.
And I believe we need to indicate when we are going to re...
Read on that, I...
Table to the 28th?
Continue the, continue the matter to the 28th.
Okay, we can do it that way, sure. We'll continue it till the February 28th, then. Oh, no, it'll be January 28th.
January 28th.
January.
Excuse me.
Do we have a second on the table?
My second.
And with the motion to table, there is no discussion? So the item is tabled until January 28th?
We do have to vote on it, though.
And we will vote? All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
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 We'll get the standstone. That was a little clunky. Me at fault. We'll get it. All right, we're tabled till the 28th. Next item, 8G alcohol license renewals. Bailey?
Mayor and councilmember, because of its single alcohol compliance violation on November 6, 2018, the alcohol renewal license for the meat market in Forest Lake must be brought to the city council for approval. All other alcohol licenses have been administratively approved by staff.
With that, I'll entertain a motion. And council, we are on page 122 of the packet. For purposes of discussion, I will make a motion that we approve the alcohol license renewal for the meat market. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, let's open this one up for discussion. Can I, so I'll start discussion, and maybe some history on this, this particular instance. This was a violation of a, so this was a violation that was heard by council and addressed by council in the penalty phase in 2018, correct? And because they had that penalty, that had, they had that violation, the penalty was granted. They don't get, it gets pulled off onto a regular agenda item for special counsel consideration, rather than going to the consent agenda as all other applications have gone. Is that, am I, am I correct in that?
Correct.
So this is really their second, it's not a, to be clarified, it's not a second violation, but they don't get the fast pass, if you will, because of the violation that was covered by previous council.
Yeah, they paid the fine, they've been through, and again, this is, to me, it's a second chance opportunity, and that's the way I've always felt about these things. So I think the lesson has been learned.
And I guess I would just add that, you know, this is, this is a similar situation to me, for me. Not quite to the degree of the last issue that we discussed with regard to Cloud X. But we, I just really encourage our local businesses that are providing alcohol and tobacco and other substances to do their due diligence on their end and ensure that they are not serving the minors.
This one is also important, and I always cringe at the tobacco or alcohol violations. They are important, however, I also, in this instance, it's one failure, and I am challenged by holding a business and the viability of a business hostage by the actions of one employee, and employees are people and make mistakes. I think the applicant, you know, that was all discussed part of the penalty phase. I am in favor of renewing this one. This is not a property that has a history of these, which in my mind, differentiates the decision on this license versus the previous conversation we had on Cloud X, where there's just a little bit more both penalty and detail of licensing to get through. So I would be in favor of approving this.
Any other discussion? Motion on the table is to approve. I will call a vote. All those in favor on this one, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next up, plow truck purchase approval. Dave, you're going to take the lead on this?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here this evening seeking approval to purchase a new single-axle plow truck for Public Works. This truck would replace the 1992 International model. And it was approved in the CIP for 2019. The one caveat to plow truck is that you can't just buy a plow truck. You have to buy the cabin chassis separate, and then the plow and the wing and the dump box and all that separate. So it requires two, two separate purchases. So this truck, we purchased one in 2017, and this truck would be basically a clone of that truck. The Peterbilt for the cabin chassis and then the plow body built by Aspen. Both of them are competitively bid on the state contract, so that bidding process has already been done. And I attached the quotes to the council packet. The reason being I'm coming so soon for this is that it usually takes 10 to 12 months for the build. The last one in 17, we had to prove the first meeting in January and get it till about the 28th of December. So the cabin chassis is out five to six months. And then once they get that, it's another four to six months just to build it, build the, build on top of its own. Unless you have any other questions, I seek approval for the purchase of the cabin chassis and plow body.
Thank you, Dave. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the 2020 Peterbilt single-axle cabin chassis in the amount of $93,713 and an Aspen single-axle plow body for $136,478.
I'll second.
Oh, sorry. We gotta talk.
We've got a motion and several seconds. Open up discussion.
Give it to Kelly, that's fine.
Just, just one point of clarification, Dave, for me. It's, it appears the, you've budgeted $220,000, but the actual purchase price is $230,191. Are you factoring in the, the sale of the other, kind of in the, you know, to kind of make up that differential?
Yeah, basically, you net, you'd net the under $220,000. That, the $10,000 to $15,000 is a pretty conservative dollar amount. Past, past surplus is even vehicles are getting $2,000 to $3,000, and we're trading in full, full plow trucks.
Okay.
So, you know, that's how you factor in that at a break-even point.
Okay. That was my assumption, but I just wanted to be sure.
We had a pretty robust discussion on this item as part of putting together the capital improvement plan. Any significant differences from this proposal to what we had talked about at that time?
No, this, this, this truck is, for this truck is going to be a swap loader as well. The way we're trying to make this a multipurpose vehicle year-round and the consent agenda that asphalt patching attachment will be able to be put on this in the summertime. It'll be able to use to haul dumpsters, to have a flat bed, all that stuff. So we're trying to aim towards using these plow trucks. They don't sit in the shed during the summertime and not could use. It's an expensive piece of equipment, so we want it out, out working, you know, year-round to get more of a value for it, so.
Any further discussion on this item?
We have a motion and a second on the, on the table to approve. With that, I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Next one is 2019 council liaison appointments. Item aye. This is item 128 on your packet. I'll take the lead on this one, councilmembers. In front of you, you have a list of suggested council liaison appointment recommendations. I did my best to, when putting together these recommendations, to balance several factors. One would be points of individual interest, as expressed publicly by yourselves during campaigns and other times. Other is existing experience. I think it's important that where we can have consistency, we have some consistency. Also, ability of time. There's a, if you look at the variation of time, not all commission appointments have the same weight of time. And I was trying to kind of balance out the workload a bit. As far, as far as just overall general count, let's share the load. This is my recommendation for our time from now until we have a new council member. Recognize that we have an opportunity with a fifth council member onboard to reshuffle the deck as necessary, what's not working, either interest or timeline perspective, as well as taking advantage of the strengths of whoever the next council member may be. So this would be my proposal for our go-forward plan. Again, recognizing we have opportunities to reevaluate. One point of interest, or one point of clarification I did want to have, you will notice there is a "to be determined" on the Lake Improvement Committee. That is a committee that is not currently active. And I think it would, is worth some discussion at the council level and also with staff, as well as with some of the stakeholders to Lake Improvement, the lake associations, the watershed districts being some of, what's the right purpose for that committee? Because it has been inactive, I left it as TBD, and we will determine kind of scope of work, what the right interest is. And please don't take it as a signal that Lake Improvement is not important. It's very important. Let's just do it the right way with the right partnerships with those already involved. So with that, I will take, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that we accept the council liaison appointment recommendations with the idea that we can discuss it within a month or so. Because here, just one thing I just wanted to bring up, you know, I've served on the watershed district and the school board at the same time. A lot of times, our meetings are the same day, same time. And there were so many things going on with the school district during that time, so it was really difficult to make the watershed district, though. For right now, you're going to make a motion that we approve your recommendations, and then we'll go from there, okay? That's my motion.
I'll second. Any further discussion on this item?
Just a, a point that the YMCA board is a non-voting appointment. It's more in an advisory, advocacy advisory and development capacity.
That is a great point.
Yep.
Bailey, can we make that adjustment?
Then I'll amend my motion to, for the change that Kathy's looking for.
Perfect, thank you. And second is amended as well?
Second.
Excellent. Any other discussion items? With that, I will call the vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Next up, item J, Ryan, Water Treatment Plant 1 and 3 Rehab Plans and Specifications.
Mayor, city council, within your packet is a request to authorize preparation of plans and specifications for Water Treatment Plant 1 and 3 Rehab. These improvements have been identified for some time, but until recently, when the financial plan was approved and adopted related to the water rates and development fees to make this work possible. So the scope of the work has been reviewed by the Water Department and Public Works and itemized in one of the second-page attachments. This would be a two-year project. Obviously, some of the major work can't be done at the peak of summertime, so we'll have to, you know, get some stuff done. And then during low-flow periods, we can do those other items that need to be done. So at this time, and as previously discussed and outlined in the city's capital improvement plan, we request the city council authorize preparation of plans and specifications for Water Treatment Plant 1 and 3 Rehab.
Thank you, Ryan. I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I make a motion to authorize preparation of plans and specifications for rehab of Water Treatment Plants 1 and 3.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I'll chime in, chime in on this one. This is, water's going to be a common theme for 2019. For clarification for those watching, we will have, this is the authorization of the plan to get started with the plan. So this is the very front end of the project. You can see the dates outlined, what starts with tonight and goes throughout August. This was a long topic of discussion as we had our 2018 budgeting process with previous council. And I think it's important we kind of start with the plans and specs and bring it back to council and have discussion so that we're able to make decisions. But it kind of starts with tonight on getting things kicked off. Any further discussion on this item?
Yeah, we've been discussing this, well, just to repeat what you said, is we did discuss it at length, and something has to get moving on it, because we're way behind on it, so, thank you.
The Water Capital Improvement Plan has this as the initial project, teeing up future projects related to water. But this is the, kind of the first domino to fall, if you will, and an important one on making sure we're well-prepared with water, so. All right, if there is no further discussion, the motion on the table is to approve. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Next item on the agenda, and Brian, before you get started, technically, you're not looking for action on this, right? So technically, this could have been moved down below in the discussion items, but let's keep it here for tonight, and I'll turn it over to you.
Mayor, city council, attached within your packet is just a 2018 year-end review that I do annually. You just kind of outline what we've completed in the whole year. It's always good to look back at what we accomplished, because a lot of things do happen. You can see a lot of the street work and other related projects and just the number of commercial and housing site applications that we had and constructed, and then some stuff that came in the queue. You know, at the time, typically, this is presented in December, but we had pretty full agenda items. But since, you know, those items and this preparation of this, we've already even had some more submittals on some improvements, site improvements. So very busy, active year. We were again successful... site improvements, so very busy, active year. We were again successful in obtaining some grant money to go towards some of those projects, and then also, we always like to just outline, is there a commitment to the city and what we get involved with annually? So, just kind of a year in review, just kind of highlight some of the bigger things that city council touched in two thousand and eighteen, and it's always good to look back and see where, where our next steps will be too, so. That's all.
Terrific. No action needed on this item, but any questions or discussion with Ryan?
Brian, can you just refresh on the water reuse project with, that was a partnership with Forest Lake High School, I see here. Can you just kind of refresh on that? I, most of this I'm familiar with, but that one, I, I would just like to kind of recall what that, what the scope of that was.
So, one of the things we try to do to lower our peak, potable water, you know, is to decrease irrigation throughout the community. We've done a number of things related to other grants, but been successful working with other partners in obtaining funds to go towards water reuse projects, and in this event, the city served as a sponsor, the fiscal agent to the, the project, and provided twenty-five thousand dollars in matching funds towards, overall, the, the big stakeholder here was the school district and Rice Creek Watershed District. Rice Creek Watershed District paid for the application and the feasibility report that was prepared by us to submit for the grant application. We're successful in obtaining those funds. Thus, the Forest Lake High School site is where this stormwater reuse project is going to be, is, has been constructed. Obviously, we'll have some touch-up work in the spring with it, but it's a private improvement, so it'll be owned and maintained by the school district, but it'll overall decrease irrigation use within the city with all the partners coming together.
Okay.
And then, part of that, there's also a large component on education, so we've taken some of that education component into the classrooms with the students.
Okay. Impressive.
Yeah. Any other discussion items or questions for Ryan? Had a busy year.
Busy year.
Ryan, you do great work and appreciate your, your work and the work of Bolton and Mink, and also, I love the number of bullet points under the community involvement. I also love the challenge tonight on the polar plunge. You've historically been a top winner. Sounds like you've got a contender this year, so.
Susan must not have looked at the, the tallies today.
That'll be, be fun to watch, so. I, I noticed you also had your email out today, so, well done. All right. Next agenda item is item L, the ACE hardware invoices. For clarification for everybody, ACE hardware invoices are on the regular agenda because the council member Husnick is asked to abstain, so that's the reason you'll, you'll see it called out, and called out whenever we have ACE hardware expenses. With that, I'll entertain a motion. I move to approve the ACE hardware invoices.
I'll second.
All of those in favor of approving these hardware invoices, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain. Very good. That closes out our regular agenda items with action items. We're gonna now open up discussion items, and we have one item, strategic planning. Patrick, I believe you're gonna walk us through that.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't have any real specific plans or, or things to present, but with the new council and a new administrator, I, I'm trying to gauge your interest in strategic planning and, and whether we should go forward with a strategic planning process that can give us our guidelines and, and guideposts for the next five years. Mostly times, strategic plans are in five-year increments. And I'd like to begin investigating that, the, the process of strategic planning, what the resources will be, and then engaging the council at some point on the scope of that strategic planning. I mean, how wide breadth you want to go, whether you want that to go down to the individual other committees that, that the city has. So, so the first step is to ask for your input into whether that's something that the council wants to pursue and have staff put their time in, and you put your time into, so.
Open for discussion?
Well, for me, it was part of my platform to, I, I really feel like our, our twenty-fourty comprehensive plan is kind of underutilized. I think this is a great opportunity to really do a little bit of, more of a deep dive into that and develop that five-year strategic plan based on that comp plan. I would love to see, personally, I would love to see that happen in the first quarter of this year at some point, and again, as, as mentioned earlier, just really developing those strategic priorities, you know, goals, objectives, and then aligning our budget potentially through a priority-based budgeting process with those strategic goals that we set as a result of that. I would like to engage staff, council, and look at our EDA folks and potentially some of our commission staff as well to be part of that process.
I would agree with Kathy. I think it would be helpful to have a document as things get brought forth to us and decisions have to be made, if we have something to refer back to, that will help discussions and keep things moving forward. Sam, any, any comments?
No, I think, I think the whole thing's a good idea. I agree with, you know, some of this stuff is really overdue, you know, so, I agree, we.
But we have clarity.
It's just more discussion and more involvement with the, with the volunteer committees, that's a great idea, you know, so.
Well, I just think, you know, I think our, I, I think the city work plan, the council, of course, the council sets in partnership with, with city staff and our city administrators should cascade down, you know, and those work plans should be developed based on, you know, the vision and the plan that we set forth. And so, I think that would provide us all a more uniform direction.
I agree with the comments that have been made. I think a facilitated session with somebody who's done this with municipalities in the past is helpful, so I'd like to see a, a plan brought forward that includes a facilitated session. I think, I suspect each facilitator has their slightly own different methodology, and so if we could see a couple of those and evaluate those as council, we can select one that kind of meets our needs.
Yeah, I, I agree with the facilitator. I think that I would like to have this scheduled for Monday's workshop, just to, when we start to solicit that facilitator to understand the scope of, of the strategic plan, if you, you know, how detailed you want it to get, how far down in the weeds do you want to get? Do you want to get to departments? Do you want to get it to boards and commissions? And, you know, either at a high level or you can continue. So, I'd like to just kind of have an informal discussion at the workshop about the scope of this kind of project, and that's, I think we'll bring that forward at the workshop and just identify when we go out and look for a facilitator, we'll try to match that to what you're looking for.
Tuesday's workshop, correct?
Tuesdays, I'm sorry.
Tuesday's workshop.
Not used to having these Mondays off.
Yep, same. Also, I, I, we do have, but beyond the comprehensive plan, there is a strategic plan, but I believe the last strategic plan that was done ended in twenty-eighteen?
Fifteen, I think it was.
It was, it ended in fifteen?
It's the last one I saw, unless you guys can educate me differently.
So, we're, so we're due. And then, also, just, I, I, my preference is, and I have, we're, we're having conversations about committee assignments and appointments on committees, and people are like, well, what's the work plan? And in my opinion, it's best for council to kind of set overall priority, and then for each of those commissions to have kind of their own mini-working session. Doesn't have to be a big facilitated session, but at least a mini-working session on how their goals and objectives might change or be amended to kind of follow what we as council have set as our overall priority with guidance from staff and a facilitator, so.
Yeah, this.
Good process to get started with.
Yeah, this may result in a strategic plan, not only for the council and the staff, but for the committees as well to follow, whether it's EDA, whether it's the Airport Commission, whether it's whoever, to give them some guidelines and, and have your backing and approval and direction on what you see as those committees.
Right.
What their duties are and where you want them to go, so.
I agree.
The other point I would mention is, I know we're anxious to do this sooner rather than later, but I would urge us to, let's fill our open vacancy, vacancy first, so that this plan can happen in March or as soon as that vacancy is filled, so that we are doing it with a full council and everyone's at the table, not starting over once we have a new.
Yeah, and after the discussion on Tuesday, we will look, start looking for those firms that do this kind of work and try to get those engaged and get some ideas of who we should be looking at, and we'll put out a small, probably a small ask for a quote from those kind of firms, see what, what they bring back, interview them, and hopefully have that ready for some kind of recommendation by the time you have a new council member onboard, and March comes, I guess, would be the kind of the goal here, so.
Perfect. Very good. Any other items of, related to this, any other items of discussion related to this? Okay, we are going to move on to staff updates. Dan?
I have no updates unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Dan? Nothing. Chief Newman?
I have no updates unless you have something for me.
Anything for Chief Newman? All right. Chief Peterson?
Mayor and city council members, I just want to touch base real quickly to kind of give an update about the opioid crisis that we've been hearing about nationwide, statewide, countywide, and also here in the city. Some people don't understand that opioids are narcotics that are actually prescribed by doctors to help reduce pain. And when people hear about opioids, they probably are thinking, oh, a drug user or, you know, illegal drugs, and it doesn't pertain to me. What a lot of people don't realize is that when they have been prescribed medications from a doctor and they use them and still had some left over, they might have those in a medicine cabinet where kids can get to them, or other people might be asking, you know, thinking that they're helping, somebody saying, oh, I have these to, you know, help reduce your pain. The problem is, number one, it's illegal to give to other people, and secondly, continued use and abuse can lead to physical dependence, and that's where we have this opioid crisis that we've been hearing about. So, you're probably gonna see in the news tonight, it's been coming out in the last few hours, that opioid overdoses are actually, have topped motor vehicle crashes as a cause of preventable, preventable death. So, literally, your chances are more likely to die from opioid overdose than in a car accident, which is scary when you hear those statistics. What I do want to explain and educate the community in regards to how to get rid of those prescription pills, do not throw them in the garbage, don't flush them down the toilet. What we have at the Washington County Headwaters Center, it's actually, some people call it the Forest Lake Government Center, they actually have a, a drop-off for unused medications, and you can bring any of those pills, whether they contain opioids or not, any kind of narcotics, any kind of prescription pills, drive them down there, you can drop them off at the drop-off box there, and Washington County Sheriff's Office will dispose of those appropriately. So, just wanted to touch base on that, since we've been hearing so much about this crisis, but I think a lot of people just don't understand it. And that's all I have for you.
Our officers carry Narcan, is that correct?
They are.
They're an opportunity for some sort of public education campaign within our community that might include like a take-back event. I know we've got a drug disposal facility really close to here, but I, I think the, the benefit of, you know, having PD out there and visible, providing education and awareness, and then, you know, physically taking those from the community, I think is really helpful.
Yeah, that's something that we can definitely discuss and we can put together. I know Washington County, they put out their, their media releases when they do. They try to do it a couple times a year, and we'll definitely try to do a better job of educating and get it out on our social media sites and on our community board when they do have those opportunities. And it's, it's always available during the work hours at the Headwaters Government Center, but definitely can work with our community policing and crime prevention unit, and we can potentially put something together.
I would think water bills, you know, sewer bills, maybe garbage would also be another mechanism to communicate that out to the community, so.
Don't flush it, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Chief Peterson? All right, Bailey?
Nothing for me, thank you.
I'd just like to comment on one thing, and it's at the, it's been in the newspaper lately about the EDA and the possible redevelopment of the Hual site, I get that right. Just that we are excited to see whatever the proposal may be. However, we have no firm proposal, we have no firm numbers, we have no firm anything regarding that possible redevelopment. I just want to make sure that we don't get ahead of ourselves a little bit. There's been no promises made, no land sales, no deals, no anything, so we will wait anxiously for that proposal to come and for the numbers to come, and as always, do what's in the best interest of the city regarding that kind of redevelopment.
I'm just sorry, that discussion ended up in the paper before it became front of the board and the EDA and the staff anyway, so that's really too bad, because it kind of puts, it seems like we're kind of being put into a position where, where we're being held hostage on that thing, and it's upsetting, so thanks for bringing it up, I appreciate it.
I'll pay you back on council member Husnick's comments. I think it's important that that meeting on the twenty-eighth, because there is this now public expectation that there's gonna be, the first headline I saw was that it's pending EDA approval on the twenty-eighth, which is troubling when it hasn't been reviewed by the EDA. I think it's important that regardless of what is the full agenda for the twenty-eighth, that portion of the meeting is very clearly workshop-only, because I can't imagine there's a scenario where we have a clarified ask and also a position to be ready to take a vote on the twenty-eighth. So, we've got to tee that up for success, and the best, in my mind, the best path for that success is public meeting, and let's learn it together, but set expectations on what we're ready to vote on, and I think in this instance, clearly, there.
Thousands.
There's not enough information.
Thousands of questions, thousands.
It's a, it's a very complicated proposal, it's a very involved proposal. It will take a lot of staff time, council time, EDA time, to make sure that this is the best, in the best interest of the city, and that if they're asking for any financial assistance, that we protect the taxpayers from any defaults or long-term obligations that can't be met, so.
Because it is in the public realm and has been a hot topic of conversation, I would encourage us to do a combined workshop for that portion of the meeting. Council may as well hear at the same time. We're all hearing the same source of truth. It's a workshop setting, it's a good time to get some basic questions answered, and rather than having multiple rounds of that, especially because now there's a perception of, the clock is ticking, let's manage that and have that be, that portion of the meeting at least be a combined session, so. We'll get to addition, what that workshop, and also full meeting agenda looks like as we get a little closer here to the twenty-eighth, so. Thank you for bringing that up.
Bridgette?
Thank you, Your Honor, no update?
Very good, thank you. Ryan?
Mayor City Council, I would say in the last month, Donovan and I have had a number of meetings with developers on potential projects, kind of like a pre-application meeting, so a lot of activity already brewing, that's always very good to hear and see. Another updates related to the roundabout project at the intersection of Highway Ninety-seven, Goodview and Eighth. We, last week, we kind of had an over-the-shoulder meeting review with MINDot Geometrics and Traffic as we plan to submit to the layout approval committee here in a couple weeks, and just don't want any surprises, and want to make sure we're getting them what they want, to make the process efficient and keep moving forward. So, we'll be moving forward with the submittal to them, and then basically, we'll come out of that eventually with an approved layout. And then, also, recently, MINDot has released another solicitation for the LRIP grants, which is a local road improvement program where we were successful in obtaining that funds to complete the south leg of the Parkway and the roundabout at Finway and Headwaters Parkway. There's no money allocated in that grants, however, this project that we're moving forward isn't planned for construction until two thousand and twenty, so we're kind of looking at two legislation sessions, hopefully some money does get allocated towards it, as just with the last round, you know, they didn't fund all the projects in, you know, the original solicitation, but came back with another award with projects that were already in the queue, so basically, the projects who already submitted an application, so that's why we want to get that application submitted, which then, our goal then was to help buy down our local cost share part of the project, so can't hurt to try. So, that's kind of where we're moving at and bringing that up, because in future meetings, I'll be coming forward to going through the process that we do with these grants, there's resolutions and stuff like that, and letters of support. We'll reengage all that as we did with the Headwaters Parkway project, so. That's my update, unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions, Ryan? All right, Dave, you're up.
Just a few things to cir, first to circle back on Chief Peterson, talking about opioids. Flushing them down the toilet is, is a horrible thing.
flushing them down the toilet is a horrible thing to do.
Yes.
When you flush your toilet here, it goes right to the Mississippi River. I mean, it gets treated, but the treatment plants aren't designed to treat for chemicals or medication, so if you're flushing pills down the toilet, you might as well just throw them in the river, because that's where they're going, so bring them to a place where they recycle them and get rid of them, you know, properly. Second thing, I was a little nervous here tonight asking for a pole truck, since we haven't gotten any snow now, or.
[laughter]
But we have been able to get out tree trimming quite a bit. We've been out in Cranbury Hayats, the development out east of Third Lake, it was in need of a pretty bad haircut, so we've had two crews out there taking really large trees and also doing ground clearing, so we've gotten quite ahead on that to where we typically would be in the winter, so. Is that going for us? And finally, as awarded in the, not awarded, but in the budget for 2019, two job postings were made available, one to take back in-house mowing, so we'll be posting a job for streets and parks maintenance, and the other one to take back street sweeping, so that'll be utilities position that that person will be doing storm, sewer, and water operations. So we will be posting them, I believe, tomorrow, and then be back in February looking for approval. That's all I have, unless you have anything for me.
Anyone have anything for Dave?
I have two quick items. We had a comment tonight about icy sidewalks. How are we doing staying on top of that, where it's related, where it's city-maintained?
The city's snow and ice control policy, we do not salt sidewalks. We maintain them, but in our policy, we do not remove them to bare pavement, we'll plow them off, and there's different thoughts on throwing salt on sidewalks and getting people's yards, so we just default to removing the snow and hopefully the sun takes care of it. If it becomes a horrible problem, we can do some things, but we have quite a number of miles of pass, so we don't really want to start going down that line unless we have to.
I can understand that.
I think we've got an unusual season, which then tees up my next question. I fielded a number, I fielded a number of requests or questions from residents who have had issues getting onto the public access site. There's a lot of heaving of ice happening on the lake because of the thaw freeze cycles, and then also, I think it's a lack of snow cover, so there's places that get ridges. Help, where's their best home? And maybe this is more of a question for Ryan as well, for those questions, and what's, help me understand what's city-maintained and what is some other jurisdiction, and what does that look like?
The Lakeside Landing is the city's responsibility to maintain. We've had the backhoe up there three or four times, and knocking it down, it just keeps coming back, so, you know, we keep, and then there's 40-degree weather, so you don't want to knock it off either, because then you got open water, it won't freeze, so there's kind of a fine line.
Yeah.
Hopefully, with this cold weather, we'll get it knocked down again, and then it should hold, but it has done a number on the shoreline of Lakeside Park, so there's gonna be some work to be done there in the spring to try to get that back, because it's pushed up, you know, that shore quite bad, so that'll be a topic going forward, too.
I think it would also be helpful for either us or partnership with the Watershed District as spring is, spring comes, will eventually come, I think there's a lot of homeowners with damage and wondering what to do, and there's some things that can, kind of best practices and things that are no-no's that we should, I know it's not city responsibility, but let's help residents with those and work with the Watershed District on kind of best practice guidelines. There's a lot of damage to be done, or damage to be fixed, I should say.
All right, with that, we'll bring it back to mayor and city council updates. We'll start with council member Husnick.
Thank you. I've got a couple of items. I was looking for some controversy tonight, so does this mean we're not gonna annex Columbus? Maybe you go?
What are you doing?
Apparently not, so we're gonna talk about what I did on Thursday evening, as I am the liaison for the school board, and the big subject there that night was swearing out of Jill Olson, who was re-elected back to the school board, and then Kate Luthner, I think that's how you pronounce it, and Alex Kettle, who was here earlier, they're all new members, two new members of the school board, so that was the big thing, and of course, they had a very long agenda, but it was, you know, stuff that isn't earth-shattering, so that was about it, so thank you.
Very good. Council member Munson?
Not at this time, I'm sure there'll be some in the future.
Very good. Council member Beestrom?
Nothing formal. I just wanted to kind of back up to the consent agenda and the donations that were made to our Forest Lake Police Department and Forest Lake Fire Department and Park and Rec Department, and just thank our community members who were willing to do that on behalf of those programs in the city, so many thanks.
Thank you. I don't have a long update tonight, I will just say thank you for all who joined us this evening. We have the first one behind us, and that's something I will celebrate, I will learn my alphabet and get these things in order next time. Also, I'm busy working on boards and commissions appointments, I expect that that will come before council on the 28th as well, and certainly, there is, those are still open positions, and so there's interest out there for boards and commissions. The application is online and available, and we're having those conversations right now, so now's the time if you're interested. Also, it's always nice to have a pool of interested candidates, because inevitably, there is some turnover. That's all, that's all I have, and if there's nothing further to come before us, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And we're adjourned. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.